I would like to call the Concord School Committee meeting to order. And I will note that we are being recorded. I also want to welcome everyone. This is a great crowd we have, and it's going to be really fun to hear from kids and teams and everything. I also want to just say, it's great to have community here, so welcome to everybody. We're looking forward to hearing from everyone. We start off our meetings with public comments, so we're going to start with that. If there are any public comments, come on up. I know there was one who could just run that one. I don't have the form, sorry. Did you?
Right. Mr. Williams, do you want to come up?
How does it work? I've never been here.
Sure, so we're going to help you out.
Do you have a public comment? Come on up.
Come on up, you can have a seat right here. We'd love to hear from you.
Great.
Oh, great. If you could just state your name and address, and then we would love to hear your comment.
394 Pope Road, Concord. Two kids at Thoreau.
Great.
And the question I have is really about the school committee policy on student publications.
Okay.
It's not clear in the guidelines that I was made aware of today how prior review is... Is the superintendent required to look at prior review prior to any publication by student? Is the principal required to? And what is the legal justification for that?
So, the policy outlines that the principal and superintendent have the right to review. The legal justification is, and I'm not going to read through the law...
I guess that would be my next question, because the law that's being referenced here makes no reference to prior review.
To prior review?
Yes.
So, the way we see it is really that for a student publication, because the school is the publisher, just like a publisher in the rest of the world would have a say in what gets published. The school as the publisher needs to be able to have a say in what gets published.
Okay, and you're making the distinction between school-sponsored and non-school-sponsored?
Yes, I mean, a publication that has nothing to do with the schools, we don't get involved.
So, a student who has their own independent newspaper that's not sponsored by the school, do these rules apply?
Yes.
Yes, it does. I'm going to defer to Diana, she knows a little bit more about this than I do.
Actually, I think the most helpful thing would be is to have the conversation with the policy subcommittee.
Yeah, yeah, I was getting to that. Yes, that's true. This is, the public comment period is mostly for comments. What I can do is give you a basic feel that we do support the principal in making decisions around site-based decisions like this. In terms of the policy itself, we have a policy subcommittee, and that's the group that would really dive into this. The next meeting is May 18th.
So, I had a meeting, again, I'm new to this process. I had a meeting with the principal this morning, who suggested I attend this meeting for this very purpose. And I guess what you're saying is, this is not the venue to do that?
Not for tonight, no. It's certainly a venue to make the comment that you would like this policy looked at. And so, it's valued here, and because of coming here tonight, we can then request to have it put on the agenda for the policy discussion. So, it's certainly a value to be here tonight and to bring it to our awareness.
To be very efficient and sweet and stuff, I would like this policy reviewed.
Okay.
I would like specifically to understand how the superintendent and/or principal has the legal justification for prior review, and whether the committee distinguishes between school-sponsored and non-school-sponsored publications.
Okay, so, that's great. I think that's something that we can have put on the agenda for the next policy subcommittee. If you'd like, I could follow up with you. It's May 18th, but I'm happy to follow up with you and let you know more specifics on that if you want to attend that meeting.
Sure.
But we can get that on the agenda and look into it in more detail.
Can I ask one question before you leave, Emily?
Yeah?
As a member of the policy subcommittee, can you tell me where these distributed in the school building?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Thank you.
And any other comments? Seeing none. Great, we don't have minutes to go through, because we approved them last time. Some quick notes as a chair's report. The first is really just my own personal. I wanted to welcome everyone and acknowledge that I'm sitting here. For those of you who aren't regulars to our bi-weekly parties here, I was just voted in as chair last meeting, a couple weeks ago. And so, I just wanted to take a second and mention that I appreciate that trust that everybody's put in me, and I consider it a privilege and a really important responsibility to be sitting here. So, thank you, and I will do my best to keep us focused on our priorities and address all the issues that come up, and engage the community. And I love when we have comments and questions, and we have people here to see things. And I really, we invite people to come and join us. So, please, come with questions and comments whenever you have something on your mind. Next thing I do want to bring up, speaking of community engagement and our calendar that we voted recently. I know that there are a lot of people in Concord, and we've heard this from some people, are disappointed that the Concord Public Schools and the high school have different calendars, that the high school does not have the religious holidays in it, and Concord Public Schools do. I just wanted to acknowledge that and let everyone know that we understand that that is not ideal. It happens to be how the votes came out, because it's a different committee. There are five of us are on the Concord School Committee. There are seven on the Concord-Harlem Regional School Committee. So, the votes just came out differently. We do know that since the two are different, that probably means this discussion is not over yet. And we, as both committees, will discuss our next steps in terms of how do we make sure that we don't end up in the same place next year, debating this whole thing again as we leave it up to our committee vote. But we will do that at our next joint committee meeting, where we have both, all of us, as well as the seven, the full seven of us from the regional committee, so that we're not repeating the discussion. So, I just want to acknowledge that we know that's still out there, and we will discuss it further. And most importantly, I wanted to bring up the fact that last week was Teacher Appreciation Week.
This week.
Sorry, this...
This week.
This week, and we did a lot all last weekend.
Well, people started celebrating last week.
Started celebrating this week, okay.
This is the official week.
Two weeks of Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yes.
The real point is, I, you know, I could never do justice in a brief comment here to what we feel for our teachers in this district, but I know I speak for all of us when I say that we just have the deepest gratitude for our teachers in the system. We've all personally experienced the Concord Public Schools firsthand, or through our kids. And we know that here in this district, students are not just taught, but are nurtured. And it is a magical thing that happens in the classrooms in these schools. And so, we just want to share our appreciation for all of the teachers in this district, and how much we see that they put in, they go above and beyond all the time. And we're about to see the fruits of some of those efforts right here tonight, which is really exciting. So, many thanks to our teachers in the district. And tomorrow, May 10th, is School Nurse Day. So, we also really want to extend deep gratitude to those nurses who really do take care of our children every day. And they do a lot, and they are the caring hands when all of us parents can't be there as parents. So, thank you to our nurses at all of our public schools as well. And that's it, that's all I had as chair's report. Does anybody have any observer or other committee updates that they wanted to share? Nothing else? Okay, then, we get to jump to the fun stuff. Fun stuff, specific recognitions. Diana?
Great, so, no correspondence?
Right.
Right?
I did not need...
Okay, great. And so, for the recognitions, again, we echo all the sentiments of the school committee with Teacher Appreciation Week. We are full of gratitude. We hire the very best teachers, and they work hard every day to serve our students with care and compassion. So, we're thrilled with our teaching staff, and we also acknowledge the school nurses, who make sure that everyone is healthy. 3,363 students and their families, each and every day. And you know, they work with some very complex medical issues as well as social issues, so we certainly appreciate them. So, we have some recognitions. We'll begin with middle school, and we're thrilled tonight. We actually have Drew with us. So, Drew is going to come up and share his recognition for his advisory committee. And you might want to share some exciting news about having the advisory at the middle school, because it's really great news, we're thrilled. So, thanks, Drew.
Thank you. So, our advisory committee made up what, I hope I get everybody off the top, right correctly off the top of my head. Jeff Frisell, Ron Royal, Kim Seer, Tara Fernandez de Villa. I'm missing one.
Reiko.
And Reiko, and worked many hours in sort of studying the idea of an advisory for the middle school. And it came about really because we felt like we needed better connection to the kids, and closer connection to the kids, and feeling like we needed to go further than CMS stands together. So, they worked many hours and took what potentially is a very divisive issue, which is instituting advisory at the middle school, and worked with the faculty and presented ideas, and got feedback from the faculty, and went back and reworked their ideas. And we took numerous surveys and collected data. At the end of the day, we had about, probably 85% of the faculty really excited about advisory, and the other 15 are willing to give their shots. So, we're here, next year, we're going to institute advisory for the first time on their meet. For the most part, every day after first period advisories will meet. And then, once in rotation, there'll be a longer block, where we'll meet for about 25, 27 minutes with kids to be able to do an activity, which will encompass CMS stands together and all the community building activities that we hope to do. And so, for me, being a part of it and advising them and working with them, it's been really exciting to see them pull their colleagues together and get them sort of on board with us. So, it's going to be really exciting next year at CMS.
That's great.
Great, thanks, Drew.
Drew, thank you so much for leading that process. That's fabulous. It's exciting.
Good to see you.
Thank you. And Pat is here, Fernandez for Willard. Thanks, Pat.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to recognize three Willard staff members. And on the heels of Teacher Appreciation Week, I certainly could be acknowledging many. The three I'd like to acknowledge tonight, first is Henneveva Matthews. Henneveva is here this evening, and she's being recognized not only for her work with the Earth Care Club, but she's also being recognized for her role as the technology specialist. And it's timely now, because we're in the midst of MCAS. And because MCAS is an online assessment, Henneveva is instrumental in making sure that things roll smoothly. And smoothly they do roll, thanks to Henneveva. I would also like to recognize Julie Vitello. Our Willard sponsors an annual food drive, and our fifth grader, some of whom are here tonight, lead that under the direction of Julie Vitello, our school counselor. So, I'd like to acknowledge Julie for all of that hard work. And lastly, I'd like to recognize Susan Chafe. And I'm recognizing Susan Chafe not only for her assistance with the MCAS process, but also for all that she has done to participate in and help with the planning of kindergarten registration. We conducted kindergarten registration very recently, and Susan did a fabulous job. So, congratulations to Henneveva, to Julie, and to Susan.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Angel is here from Thoreau.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I would like to recognize two Thoreau faculty members. The first person I'd like to recognize, you're going to meet very shortly, if you haven't already. I would like to recognize Karen Hoyt for her amazing steam project that she developed and implemented with her fifth grade students. Very shortly, you will see why this important work was recognized by the chairs of the Cooler Concord Fair, and why it is an extraordinary example of green steam. So, please prepare to be inspired. I would also like to recognize our library media specialist, Karen Pettijohn, for her efforts to raise money through the Save the Children's Fund Helping Hands Handprint Initiative. For every handprint students design and submit, $1.90 is donated to help children in Nicaragua and Indonesia. As of May 5th, Thoreau students have raised $10,098.50 for the cause. So, this is truly an example of children helping children. So, I am very pleased and proud to honor them this evening. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Angel. And the last recognition is on behalf of Sharon Young at Alcott. And Sharon would like to recognize the entire Alcott faculty and staff for doing a great job managing and supporting the students and taking care of each other during her absence. And we're thrilled to report that Sharon is back in good health, and she's returned to Alcott. So, the community is thrilled.
We're very happy to have her back. Terrific. Now, we really get on to the fun part.
Yes.
So, we first are going to hear from the Thoreau and Willard Green teams.
Yes, so we're going to start with the Willard Green team.
Really, alright.
So, that is Henneveva and her team, right?
Yes.
Ready? We are here. We are the Willards of KFIP. We're happy to present our work to you today. We would like to start by sharing our participation in the Cooler Concord Fair on Saturday, February 5, 2017. Here are some photos of our exhibit. We thank our superintendent, Diana Rigby, staff, and many Concord residents for visiting our exhibit. A bunch of visitors stopped by during the entire day. Our focus for the exhibit was about energy conservation. We learned about our energy efficient features in our school. Here are some examples. We have many windows that bring a lot of natural light to our school. There are sensors in all the classrooms to monitor natural light in our visual light. This just means we are custodian, because how the computerized systems monitors all parameters and the buildings for energy conservation. We, after we learn about the features of our school, we wondered how the communities contributed to the energy conservation. We created energy with questions about energy for our Willard community. We received 82 responses. You can see the majority of Willard communities using LED lights and programing the research.
To learn more about energy conservation, we did an experiment where we insulated cardboard houses and tested them outside using temperature probes. We started by thinking where to put the doors and windows. Our school faces sun, so we wanted our house to be soft, to make sure that they could get as much light as possible. In addition, we had to think about the size of the windows. We have plenty of materials to choose from to insulate our houses. The challenging part was to figure which materials were good insulators.
Constructing a house was hard work. We had to intense details and make sure windows and doors had no drafts. We started by insulating the floors, then the walls, and finished with the attic. We used temperature probes to measure how long it took for houses to get to go from indoor temperature to outdoor, outside temperature.
We connected the probes to the computer, and we were able to read our data. We couldn't run the experiment on a sunny day. Therefore, our data couldn't affect how windows would help to keep the houses warm. All the graphs had similar curves representing the rate of temperature drop. As a story, we wrote a story titled "The Three Little Bears." The story is very similar to a tale of three little pigs. Julie, Katie, and Josh are our main characters in our story. Each one built a house and home. The big bad Willard was a can be read and guessed at.
After the fair, we started our focus on paper production.
Willard uses around 5,400 pieces of paper by printing paper each year. Some papers end in "in" and trash pans, which are recycled. Many thousands have been printed multiple times and left at the printers.
First, we learned the process of how paper is made by using recycled paper to create new paper. We created a screen cast that students can watch to learn the steps on how to use the printer. Now, we are going to use screen cast.
If your printer is now coming out, that probably means that the printer has paused. To, and to avoid wasting a lot of paper, go to the Apple icon in the right, in the left of your computer, and then go to System Preferences. Click the scanners and printers icon, and choose what printer you want. Open the Print Q, and delete all the files that are there. Then, you click the zip, then you click the pause button, and now it will finally print. This is one way to avoid wasting a lot of paper. Thank you for your time.
We made a sign for all the printers, so students know what to do if the printer is not working.
We created a sign to put on all laptops and desktops, and we're going to continue expecting people to print.
We designed covers for the recycling trash bins in three classrooms. We tested them for several days and got feedback on how to include them. We modified the design. Who knows? We might make this a product in the future.
Thank you for supporting the environment. We love your great school.
Wow.
With all the work, we just had to follow up with them.
Oh, my goodness, that was fabulous. Good job, guys.
And who designed the T-shirts?
Alright, yes. I love the shirts.
We did all different kinds of design, and then we voted, and maybe people agreed with them, that this was the way to go.
That is great. And many of us were there at the Cooler Concord Fair too, and saw those houses, and it was just a fabulous project. You guys have done such great work there. Well done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, the Thoreau Green team is coming up.
Thoroughly green.
Thoroughly green.
I'm Karen Hoyt, and I teach fifth grade at Thoreau. And we thank you for inviting us, because we like to share what we do. I know your children go home and say they didn't do anything in school. We hope to show you that's not true. So, when we were given the opportunity to do the Cooler Concord Fair, I decided we should use our environmental science unit and teach the people of Concord about plastic. And I have three wonderful students who were key contributors to the project, and they're going to show you what we did.
Getting started, in our fifth grade science unit, we learned about how limited our resources are on Earth. We researched a lot of topics. For example, Earth has very little usable water. Only 3% of the water on Earth is drinkable.
We also learned about food chains and bioaccumulation. And we learned about oil spills and water pollution, and also the limited amount of water and air that we have.
Next, we study facts about the water in water bottles. In particular, quality is the same, if not worse, than tap water. Tap water is much cheaper. If you go to the library, paragraph, we'll be there.
After that, we researched plastic and how long it lasts on Earth, which is a long time. We wrote our first paragraph essays on plastic and its effects on Earth.
A beginning paragraph sample: Plastic is trashing our planet.
We thought you could read the rest.
Yes.
A volume paragraph sample: Tap water is better than bottled water. Okay, this is the one more line paragraph sample, and there are ways that you can help.
And this is an example of an ending paragraph sample: Plastic is destructive and is harming wildlife, the world and the people in it.
We started work on the Cooler Concord project armed with an understanding of humanity and pet matter. Groups were assigned topics to research, and then to teach their people about.
There were multiple topics that were given. Each team group had their own, and these are, here are the topics. Here's one of the posters that we made to hang up at the Cooler Concord Fair. This is how plastic is made.
This is a poster of the Great Pacific Garbage Patch, which is a patch of garbage in the ocean that is heated by currents, and it's twice the size of Texas.
This is another poster, and it's about plastics effects on animals. And this is the microbeads, and microbeads, like, get stuck in animals' guts, like, they're poisonous, and that's so small there, so...
So, within the classroom, we found ways to reuse plastic shopping bags and plastic water bottles. We need a vertical garden.
Comment, Nancy?
This is the...
Uh, this is a sleeping mat that we work on, made entirely of plastic bags.
I brought it here.
Oh, that's pretty large.
We didn't finish it.
That's fabulous.
How did we find the idea?
So, we watched a video on the internet of a woman who made a plastic bag for homeless people out of...
A sleeping mat.
A sleeping mat, and...
Because it's cushioned.
We...
Pass it around.
This one took about 1,000 plastic bags, and we rotated it.
Oh, my God. Yeah, we're going to give it to Diana, and she's moving between us.
She wants an actress.
Like, show me, tell her.
Wow, that's really amazing.
Uh, this is our sign that we made over our, like, presentation at Cooler Concord Fair.
This was our space to teach Cooler Concord about plastic and environmental protection.
Um, we put the cooler in.
What is, what's happening in this one?
Okay, so, for our sand, we had an example of microbeads, and one of the products, like, everyday product that people use. And we were letting people feel it, and like, actually see. It's really not, like, something that's necessary in the products that you buy.
So, you can add vinegar to milk, and you can turn it into plastic. It's called a release.
So, that's what companies are trying to do now, is to make biodegradable plastic, and it's moldable. And so, we wanted to show how that could happen. We brought that.
So, we learned that birds eat a lot of plastic, so we had a simulation, which was a container filled with rice and lots of plastic. And we had people put rubber bands around their hand and try to get the rice, which was really hard, because there was so much plastic. So, now, there are a lot of birds with plastic inside their stomachs.
Uh, this is again for Sharon.
They're educating.
Uh, there's a poster, so, and microbeads are found in a lot of products. There's a poster called "The Rise of the Prayers."
Correct. Carry garbage, the Pacific Ocean, where the trash swirls around forever.
Um, it's... We love taking part in educating our community.
That's all, folks. Thank you. This is Hannah Daniel. This is Sarah Keifer. And this is Matthew Conti.
Boy, you guys are just amazing, that was fabulous.
Yes.
I wish these presentations could go out to every school, and that everybody could... I wish these presentations could go out to every school and that everybody could start making maths like that. That's wonderful. Thank you so much for bringing it here. It's really exciting. And the elementary schoolers, we will not be offended if you need to go home and go to bed. Enjoy. Thank you so much for coming. And the next one, we have middle school students here now. We are very excited to hear about this. Ms. Beatty has brought her Girls Who Code.
Do you want to start at the end? Somebody can sing over there. Thank you so much for having us. I know it's an unusual occurrence to have an after-school program come to school today. I think this program is really all theirs. So, I have some of the members of the club here and some of our high school helpers. And we'll introduce them all as we go through. And they've, it's been a privilege and honor to work with all of them throughout the year. They'll talk about their timeline and their process and show you their product. They have really done an enormous amount of learning. And it's been very valuable to watch when we think about implications for our in-school curriculum. So, with new state standards for digital literacy and computer science and new national standards, international standards for technology education, thinking about how you could quit decision-making, planning, iterative process, computational thinking in the hands of kids and have them choose their problem, design process, change and change and changes they need to. It's just an incredible process to watch. So, with no further delay, I will begin. You all will tell me if I click too fast or don't click fast enough. Yes. So, first we have Tori introducing.
So, this is our agenda for our slideshow. So, this is our agenda for our slideshow and if you'd please go through it. And it's kind of just telling us about what we learned and our coding.
I also did the presentation. I asked for some ideas and I had eighteen slides like that.
Okay, so about the club. So, obviously, we learn how to code, which is kind of a given. And so, one thing that really doesn't be said by the club is that we learn, that we meet new people. And so, I personally have learned so many new people. Like, I've learned people who from Sanborn, 6th grade, 8th grade, so yes. And so, we also go on different trips for Girls Who Code. And so, that's the playground slideshow. And we also learn how to brainstorm, which is a very fundamental tool for all grades and all ages. So, that's again, how we have the later slides. And these are our club members. And so, we have some of them here today.
Alright, so the first meeting for our club was November 21st. And since then, we've met pretty much every Monday. And our first meetings, we're talking mostly about the four core, as the Girls Who Code calls it, which is the functions, conditionals, loops, and variables. And then, on January 9th, we went on a trip to see the figures. And then, after the trip, the next meeting, we're mostly on working on the new website and the making. And then, the last meetings have been working on debugging those programs.
This is Sam.
Our sisterhood, we met new people and this is our history contract. We had to respect and listen to others' ideas and keep it up in mind. We had to be aware of our actions and what we were doing. We had to be nice people and we had to be respectful. And we didn't, well, in most part, we didn't talk about, we didn't talk what other people were talking. We were inclusive and we followed the goal and rule, be kind. Help others when they needed help. Make sure no one was left behind. Be responsible and be creative.
Who's speaking to the class?
Oh, so this was. Hi, Juliette. This was part of our process when we planned the Save the Water game. So, this is just sort of what we wanted the game to look like. It ended up looking a little different than this, but this was just a starting of ideas at first.
So, this is our brainstorming for our Environment Run game, which we made with JavaScript. And this is kind of showing all of the brainstorming and process, which we obviously didn't tell you. And so, this is just showing like all the, what we wanted to be like. And obviously, we tried our best at this. And so, this is on the code that we used to make the game.
It'll make sense to all of you.
See a couple of things would have been different.
So, brainstorming plan, so we talked about different ideas. So, obviously, right here, this is our original, like, game development or website. And so, obviously, we had a lot of ideas and we never touched it. And so, we all had different thoughts. So, obviously, we have environment, community kindness, and helpful how-to's. So, we had different color, different ideas. And we're constantly updating as you start the last slide, which we constantly make new ideas in the way forward. Constantly raise, we constantly change. And yes, and so, we all worked together. So, for the Save the Water game, I know there were three girls who were working on that. And so, they all worked together to come up with different ideas.
Functions. So, the. So, the definition of functions is that the computer can bundle the commands and logic so that you can use them when you want to. So, for example, in a game where you, when you get a point, the functions add a point to the number of points you already had. And yeah.
So, the definition of loops, when you tell the computer, you can do stuff for a repeated amount of time.
And where did that show up in your game?
Well, we had loops in our Save the Water game. And we made both characters run at the same time, doing things for a certain amount of time.
Variables, so variables are when the computer can store information for you. So, in Environment Run, we used variable for a number, as a, the variable was a number, which was used for sizing. So, things weren't drastically different sizes that didn't exist. And conditionals. And so, the definition of conditionals is that the computer can make decisions for you. And so, as you can see in the picture, it says if and else. So, that's called an if and else statement. So, if we say, "I want to drink water," if the person wants to drink water, do this command. If they don't want to do it, do this command and so on.
This is how we learned. So, we used Code Academy for, to learn JavaScript. Khan Academy for HTML and JavaScript. Then, Sola Learn for JavaScript. W3 Schools for HTML. Scratch for block-based. Code.org for HTML and also Yocadis.
Yocadis is where we house the website. HTML.
So, HTML. HTML stands for Hyper Text Markup Language, which is a coding language often used to create websites. HTML is mainly used with CSS, which is cascading style sheets, which is what we use to do all the designing and the formatting. We used both HTML and CSS to code our website, but we mainly use HTML.
The website design is background, fonts, images, and colors. And we work to raise awareness. And you can use HTML to raise awareness for something or to try to sell products, like you see in a lot of websites. This is the link to our site.
Let's see if I can remind you. So, you can see on the site, they have a short introduction, a link to the water game. And then, a link to a simple version of the Environment Run game. Okay, hold on. This is not my favorite map. There we go.
There we go.
So, they're gonna talk about each of these games as they get into the design for those curriculum. But this is the basics. So, you know, there are so many tools these days which they can do what you call whizzyway. What you see is what you get. You don't have to think about code at all. And this was all coded by them.
So, this is the code for the website. I'll explain all this.
I'll give a big definition or something. So, as you can see, there are tags for everything. And so, the tags basically define what you write inside the tags. And you always, when you open the tags, you can't move it open, otherwise the computer will get confused. You always have to close the tags. And it doesn't show here, but when you're, when you're starting the document, you need to do HTML doc. You need to do that so the computer knows that you're using HTML for the document, for the website, or whatever you're making. And so, we, these are how we made the links. So, you have to do, as you can see, the tags here and then you close the tags. And over here, you can put a caption, stuff.
So, for our game, I, me, Caroline, Brad Yanni, and Jane Barton, we all worked on the Save the Water game by using block-based programming. And we used our programming through code.org because it's very simple to understand. And like, it shows you step by step on how to pull it, basically, by using games that you normally find. And so, something new that we found by coding there was how to stop the actors from leaving after the game was finished, after a certain time, and how they like disappeared at the end. And if you're a coder, then code.org can help you make the game easier if you don't know where to get started or you just want something basic. Also, having coding knowledge is very fun to know. It's just if you wanted to sit down and make the game, code.org is in block-based, it's fun to do. So, we made a game with block-based programming. And a big part of the game is having loops in order to have all the characters running at the same time for a certain amount of time and making them stop at the end too. So, our game is about trying to get the blue water balls, which represent water, and not trying to get the airplane, the airplanes, which represent litter. And if you collect the bigger airplanes, your score is lowered by four points because we tried to make the game eco-friendly by showing if you collect the airplane, which represents that's litter, you get a lot of points taken away. So, the link to our game is on that picture. And there's directions in it. Okay, pay attention to the directions. Object of the game, get as much water as you can. How to play, only use the right and left keys. To start the game, press the down arrow.
Does anyone want to play?
Beer Penguin, how's that any good?
It's a penguin.
So, you try to get the blue water bottles, or water buckets, sorry. And if you get an airplane.
That's great.
Yeah.
I always end up with a negative score.
Very cool.
Each water is just one, but the airplane is minus four?
Yeah.
Ooh, high-risk stakes.
That's great. Don't want a litter.
That's great.
Nice job. Very cool.
JavaScript. So, we, it's called Environment Run, based on in the JavaScript. And so, JavaScript is a programming language that is used for many different things, including to make webs, to work with websites, games, and apps for mobile devices. So, what we learned while we were making this game, working with the JavaScript, is how to make transition between different scenes, how to work the if/else conditionals, and how to use variables, which we talked about a little earlier. How to get the program to draw something on the screen. For us, how to get buttons to work with our program. So, a way to, a thing to, a way to apply programming to the real world is, other than just with math and science and programming, the problem-solving aspect is also very helpful for different things other than just math, science, and programming. And then, so, our game was Environment Run. And you can see the logo and the two characters, which we made. And so, there's seven different levels, one for each continent. And then, they've got different backgrounds and different things you have to collect. And so, you can also choose the different characters, which is what the buttons can be helpful for. And then, you can do different things, which, so, we had all these things, but we're still in the debugging process. So, the full version is on the website. We have the simplified version, which is on the website. You can see there. You just use the open. I don't even know what a plain would be. Alright, so, you use this space bars to collect these. And in the full version of the game, there are different things on different levels to represent different environmental problems that you have to solve. Especially, there was a lot of debugging there.
Wow.
Sort of beyond the law, so.
I'm sorry, what are those things that you're collecting or knocking out?
They are just, they be different litter and different environmental problems they have to solve.
Got it, okay.
Which was the prototype that they started with and then expanded it so that they have different tasks on the different concepts.
Okay, got it. That's great.
Okay, so, as I mentioned in earlier slides, we did go on a paint figures trip. And so, if you go to the movie, there's a movie about three African-American women who had changed at NASA. And so, one, the one that we mainly focused on was Dorothy Vaughn. And she, in the movie, was a coder. And she, she kind of like, she, there was IBM building in the NASA, in NASA. And she couldn't, she was supervisor at the time. So, she went to a library and picked up a book on ORF.
Blood drink.
And she taught herself how to code, how to language. And so, eventually, by the end of the movie, she becomes supervisor of the IBM and she teaches all these, many women how to program the IBM machine. And yes, and there are other women in there, but we mainly focused on Dorothy Vaughn because she was a state-friedess. So, could this be a new elective or a new course for all students? So, this is only after-school club, so meaning some kids who would love to join could join. And so, we had girls who wanted to like, could join. And having a school gives girls and boys both opportunity to do the coding elective. And yeah, so, yeah, sorry. Coding can be used in other classes, meaning that we can use it in science, math, English. So, we can use it in English because kids who could learn HTML could potentially make a website and have almost like a portfolio of their English essays. So, you can all find them and you can categorize them into subject, category, or whatever you want. And in science, I know in my 7th grade biology class, we do a lot of projects and we do different things. Like, we did superhero project, we had to make a poster. So, potentially, we could code some sort of game or information site about, to portray that information. And for math, computers act is obviously a calculator. So, I know there's this one command in JavaScript, which is math.random, which gives a random number. And so, you could potentially use that to get random numbers to get, to practice more on equations. If you need extra help. And you can help, and you can get the information because computers are pretty much calculators. And so, could this be a new elective or a course in the next two years? So, next year, there is a coding elective for 8th graders, I believe. I don't think it's for any of the other grades, but we just learned HTML in that class. So, potentially, this could be a new elective in the next two years because obviously, you have next year. But I feel like this would be a very good elective and they can try it out because this is more of the language of the future and people should be, maybe, people should. because this is more the language of the future, and people should be, maybe, people should be learning code more, because we want that stuff as the technology develops. And so the elective could be, uh, HTML, Python, and even JavaScript. And Python is one of the easiest languages to learn, because it's very simple. JavaScript is one of the more harder programs to learn, but it challenges people to say, and do stuff. HTML, just do a website, you can make a website.
And it can go beyond a language. Oh, at this point, I just wanna say a huge thank you to these three young women who have been staying so quietly. Um, among them, they stuck with us for the whole year. Um, they were helpful in terms of debugging, troubleshooting, showing the girls ways to isolate code so they could figure out what was working and what wasn't working. Um, we'll consult with Mr. Becklinson at high school on occasion. Um, but we, we couldn't have done it without them. And where they initially came in thinking they were just gonna assist, they really became members of our club, and we're really happy to have them along with us. So they're gonna speak just a bit on their own, about their own experience with this.
Alright, well, I'm Emily. Um, I'm a senior at the high school, I've taken three programming courses. And with that experience, I'd just like to say that they have learned some really intricate details about thinking they've learned not to get defeated when they run across these issues. Like, if you miss a semicolon, your entire program is gonna say that you were wrong, and you have broken everything in the world. But they have learned that, you know, it just takes some time, it takes a careful eye, it takes a new perspective and creative thinking, and they work so well together. And they put all of these different mindsets and ideas together, and come up with this really great teamwork project.
Uh, I'm Megan, I'm a sophomore. Um, one of the things that I just think is really cool about this whole process, and learning to code in general, is the kind of "I can fix it" mindset. Like, the, instead of looking at a problem, and, you know, like Emily said, getting defeated by it, just approaching it with a "how can I make this better?" And I think that's a really valuable skill to have, and I think they did a really good job with that, um, throughout the process.
Uh, I'm Ella, I'm a junior at the high school, and I've taken two programming courses and TA for one. And one of the things that amazed me most about helping out these girls was just how brave they were jumping into this, because coding is unlike anything else that we really learn at school. It's not really like math, it's not really like English, it's kind of a mixture of both, and it's just a whole new world of, you know, creativity and possibilities. And they really dived headfirst into it, and gave it all that they had, and created some pretty amazing stuff, I think. And so, I'm just really proud of them.
I was in line for proud of them all. Uh, I just wanna do a little shout-out to, I did have three other adults who came and assisted on occasion throughout the year. Nicole Lee Field, who's one of our data managers at Ripley. Um, Terry Smoke, who's a structural technology specialist at the high school. And Kathy Talbott, who's the construction technology specialist at the bit of school. Initially, we weren't sure how many hands we would need, so, um, they were, they were at the ready to come and assist. We were in very able hands with these three assistants, um, so it was nice to have them for us. Are there questions?
First, a big hand.
Just amazing. I would say I loved the fact that you girls in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade here were up here talking about things that were over my head. I mean, it's just inspirational, the fact that you guys can put together games like that and write the code. I'm just, it's wonderful, well done, kudos to you. And thank you for the help that you guys provided, too. This is so neat to see in our schools.
Yeah, very exciting. Yes, and, uh, we will have courses at the middle school electives. It's coming. But thanks to all of you, you've inspired us, and so we will have, uh, coding courses. So, it's coming. So, thank you, thanks to all of you, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you so much, that's great. That's, that's the stuff we really love to hear about here, it's really neat. Um, okay, so on to more, and I will say the same, feel free to go, we don't wanna keep everybody up late. Um, in the meantime, we're gonna move on to more Business Matters.
Yes.
We have some drafts of our handbooks. Um, the first is the K5 handbook, and is Kristen.
Kristen wasn't able to join us.
Oh, she's not?
No, she's with her children. So, um, I'm gonna help her out.
Are you gonna take us through it?
Yes.
Okay, great. And I'll pass it over to Diana.
Yes, essentially, all of the changes, there are twelve changes, and they're basically updates. There's no content that's been changed. So the one thing I do wanna point out is, um, well, I, I take that back. We did add the acceptable computer use policy. Initially, we had only fifth-grade parents and, um, students sign it, but now that we're using so much technology in the school that we're having all the students, it's all part of the handbook now. So every parent, uh, will read it and understand it, and that will be signed at the elementary level. So that, that's the major content change. Everything else is only updated.
Okay.
Did you have any questions? Did anybody have questions about our updates?
No, none of them. None of this one. Any other questions, Randy? Yeah?
Right.
None of this one.
Okay. Move right on along to the CMS one?
The middle school, Drew is here tonight, because that has more, did, yes, Drew is still here. Yes, thank you, Drew. There are content changes.
That one had significantly more changes.
Thank you, Drew.
More changes, but I would, I would say that, actually, a lot of them, a lot of those changes, they're really just updates.
Okay.
As opposed to content changes.
Yeah.
Um, you'll see, as, as you go through, we're updating, you know, principal stuff, um, we're updating superintendent, we're updating contact information from colonial.org to conference BS. Um, we're taking out, you know, the day in the life, we decided that wasn't necessary. Um, we updated the school, the schedule, the music schedule, to reflect how many times general music actually meets, two times a cycle. Um, we updated a lot of stuff to reflect our technological improvements and updates. So instead of, um, you know, instead of requesting homework, after three days, all homework can be found on Google Calendar, so we're taking those pieces out. Um, parents can sort, parents can report absences online now. So those are all, those are a lot of the, uh, updates that are in here. Within our rules, probably the most specific pieces, what we ended up doing was, the con, where we used to have consequences of the violation, we just took out consequences of violation, almost uniformly, uniformly throughout the rules. Because we feel like that's actually covered underneath our progressive discipline policies. And we felt like the being specific about the consequences didn't make much sense. We, we follow the rules, and, um, we don't need to lay out everything we do every time there's a, a, uh, you know, student breaking the rule. We did switch the order of a couple rules, rule two and five switched orders, just because one, we had rule one talking about weapons, and so rule two also talked about that, just seemed a little bit more logical. Um, and one of the changes that I added, rule seven, the change to, actually, we didn't take out the consequence of the violation, we will do that. Um, one piece that Diana mentioned, as far as, um, a change to, you know, content changes adding in, we're working on this, adding in the advisory to what the general school schedule would look like in here.
Yep.
Just kinda going through. Most of the rest of that stuff is really just clarifying. So, you know, when we talk about the due process piece about inviting a parent to, um, I'm sort of on page ten right now, talking about due process, inviting our parent to a disciplinary conference, we included video evidence, because we actually use video, um, as evidence now. We have some cameras in the school, thank you very much. That's been huge, um.
Okay.
So that, that having some video in the school has helped us sort of come to understand what happened and when. And we use that with parents, so we wanted to include that in, in the handbook. We talked about sort of moderate tardiness, and sort of at least letting parents know that we will be in touch with them when tardies get the excessive. We wanna make sure kids get to school as much as possible, obviously. Um, we tried to be a little bit more specific about the bus rules, just adding in respectful language, as if that wasn't obvious, but we just wanted to be as specific as possible with the students. Uh, we added in, um, a piece that I found, actually, in the school committee rules, about, uh, homework and religious observances, that parents can ask for exemptions for that, if there, if there's a religious observance that we might not know about, or they feel like they're observing, that they just need to notify us, and we'll, we'll exempt their child from the, needing to do homework that night. Um, we added in underneath the health screenings, which is page thirteen. Um, we talked about the mandated, the mandated, oh, uh, the March two thousand sixteen OBR bill, that we get to school at all seventh graders, so we let our parents know about that, starting next year. Uh, and then we moved a piece, um, that was in the rules, um, about a student making a threat of physical harm to himself or another student underneath a medical piece. Felt like that was much more talking about self-harm than anything else, that would fall underneath the medical, um, nurse's piece, than it would fall underneath our rules category.
Okay.
So that was the logic behind moving that, but it's still the same, same, uh, same par, you know, same paragraph that we used before. Um, and then clarified the principal's recognition, that's just how we recognize. Really, that's, that's the most, most of the pieces there, at the end of the day. We're also just clarifying how parents can pick up, uh, score records at the end of their time with us, at the end of eighth grade, that they can sign them out, or if we need them, we will move them out, but we actually prefer them to come and pick them up, so.
Great.
Do you guys have any questions?
Questions?
Had some questions.
Yes.
Um, we answered a bunch of them, but, uh, let me, uh, get back to the top here. The first question is just general information on page three. What does it mean to peg a locker?
Ah, yeah.
So you break a pencil?
Yeah.
Put it in underneath, where, how your lockers open up, so you, you open your locker, and there's a little mechanism underneath that pops open. You put a pencil underneath there, and then your locker won't lock.
Yeah.
So what happens is then the kids can just open and close it. It saves them time during the day.
Welcome to middle school.
They can code.
They can code and they can peg the locker. It's a handy hand for better looking.
That makes it even harder for us to make sure that their stuff is safe and protected, so we tell them not to do it. And it was tough.
I'd love they figured that out, though.
Of course, it's pretty clever.
Yeah, that is.
Future engineers.
Yeah, the time savings.
They've probably been over all those MIT field trips.
Made it down, like, the best of them.
Actually, I think it's on the internet.
On page four.
Yes.
I was just thinking about, uh, uh, the rule one. Um, is there something we could add? I'm thinking about the incident we had, that was not on school property, even though it was over here in the gymnasium. Um, is there anything we might add there that would, if a group is either wholly or predominantly made up of, of CMS students, that they would fall under that group, too? I mean, you know, they, um, I think the word I used was an organized function. So not a birthday party, not a, you know, hanging out in somebody's kitchen having pizza. It's an organized function that is geared specifically to CMS students.
No, which one?
We don't think we can do that.
No, it's, no, it's very clear.
Rule one, uh, rule one, I think.
No, in, in checking with our attorney, we consulted with legal counsel, and it's very clear that it's only, these rules only apply to, um, school-sponsored activities.
Okay.
Regardless of the participation, it's the sponsor.
Okay.
So, for example, if it was school-sponsored, and we had CMS students, and ACT and Boxboro students, and students from other schools, we would be responsible. But if it's our students that are in a rec department, or ACT and Boxboro someplace else, our district is not responsible, it's who's sponsoring them that is responsible. So that, that's the, we, we conferred with legal counsel about that.
Yeah, okay. Um, let me see here.
We did add it under, uh, rule three. We added, um, baby e-cigarettes. Yeah.
Maybe noticed that.
That's good. Titer.
Keeping up with the times.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm impressed with the work you did on this, on this side. Uh, the, uh, page nine.
Yep.
I just wondered if this is, um...
Which rule?
Would this, rule fourteen, sorry. Uh, would this cover everything that, you know, that disrupts decorum in a classroom?
It covers a lot. It covers a lot. It tends to be, it tends to be used to cover bigger pieces than just decorum in a classroom. So it can cover a whole buzz of things that happen out, sometimes outside of school, that disrupt the environment of student learning, um, in the school. So stuff happens outside of school, but kids come in, and then we're all talking and buzzing about, you know, a particular kid, and it becomes a distraction in the classroom, or a distraction at lunch. That's where that rule is kind of an umbrella rule, just to talk about student behavior in lots of different places. Um, I do, you know, obviously, we wanna think about how widely you use something like that, but it does, it is one of those umbrella rules.
Yeah, and I noticed it says "any other disruptions," um, that interfere with the process. I, I guess I was just struck that it didn't say, didn't call out classroom specifically, but, um...
I, I don't, I don't think you need to be that specific with the classroom, because also, teachers can, teachers can discipline students for this behavior in their class, um, easily, and just, you know, that, that is behavior throughout the day, so I don't think, I never thought that that needed to be specified or said.
Um, on page...
Sorry, just quickly, before you leave that one, the only change there, sorry, is deleting the consequence of violation, is that right? I'm not seeing another change, okay.
Right.
On page twelve, tardiness. Um, my guess is you've taken out the note requirement, just because it's paperwork and headache, that's probably not necessary, but how will you handle a situation? I could see somebody saying, "Oh, I don't have to just get a note, I just go into the office and say, you know, I am late, I, you know, got hung up at the crosswalk." Um, is there any, what are you gonna do about excessive tardiness?
So we do, we do track them, we track both tar, we track, track both tardinesses and absences. And when stuff crosses a line over, um, various, like, five times a month, we begin to send letters to parents about the importance of being on time to school, because you're missing class. That's gonna become even more important next year, as, you know, students are gonna head to first class the, when their bell, when the first bell rings. So being on time will be important. And, you know, we are very conscious of, um, sort of following through with parents, and we send stuff out monthly. And the other piece that we, we try and do is, um, follow the absence over the course of months. So if we see a pattern, or, "Oh, we're for this month, for that month, for that month", and they're just following underneath the line, we'll still send a letter out, just to, um, let parents know that we're very concerned about their time. It's not a perfect system by any means, but we, we do want them to know we're tracking and concerned about students being on time and in school on regular basis. Yeah.
But you're not asking students to bring in a note anymore?
For just being tardy, you know, if, if there's a reason why, they tell us. Except they're excused, but, you know, most times, it's just get out of the house type of things. And we're not asking for a specific note to excuse that, because there's, you need to be on time.
Yep. Got it.
Page thirteen, makeup board. Um, the, I wrote it on the current one. At the, underneath the bolded type, it says, "Teachers are not expected to furnish assignments in advance. Students are planning to take a vacation, oven regals, give a school day." I was just thinking, you know, it seemed to me that we might wanna encourage kids to come talk to a teacher, say, "What am I gonna miss? Is there something I can do ahead of time?" And I, just inserting, uh, the words, um, in accordance with the school committee policy, "teachers may, comma, but are not expected to..."
So I gue, I guess the response would be, if, if people ask, almost always, teachers won't respond that way. I think their, their concern is, I've gotten, you know, I have in my short time as principal, so the expectation that we're gonna be gone for a month, please, you know, please get teachers to pull together assignments and make sure we can keep up with the, you know, keep up with the piece. And it's, it's not reasonable for teachers to do that. Um, I have, I have not heard, you know, students touch base with their teachers, teachers refuse to do that and stuff. So I think they do tend to rely on, you know, check the Google Calendar, check what you're doing, you'll find quite a bit of information on it underneath the assignment pieces, as far as the forward thinking, but they will give kids that stuff. I don't have a problem with may if that, if they work on that.
And it's really, I wasn't thinking about it from the teacher's standpoint, I was thinking about it more from, say, a new parent who is going to read, sixth grade parent reads through this and sees, oh, that's a good idea, they, instead of doing it when we get back from vacation, and they've completely forgotten everything they learned the week, the content was given, they could ask for it ahead of time. So it's just a reminder to the parent and maybe the student that, you know, to do something about it beforehand rather than after.
So I can actually think of that, so, you know, may touch base with their teachers regarding their upcoming piece. I, I want to be really careful about not getting into a piece about condoning that absence, where it's like, we're going to go to visit family for three weeks where we don't normally get a chance, even if that trip might be totally valuable and an experience, a learning experience for that student outside of school, which they would never really get, they're replacing the, the learning in the classroom, and sort of our purview about being there and being responsible for kids, I, for me, that's primary, so I, I have to find that line, I, I know, you know.
I just bring it up.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's a fair and honest quandary to sit and go, how much do you want to sort of open that door going, yeah, we want to, we're willing to bend for you here, but we also really don't want to condone you going because we want you in the classroom. You know, is that, how do you find that right, right on piece? I have no problem bringing it back to, actually, it's an interesting piece to sort of debate with my school, with the school.
It came to my mind because of all, you know, we've had a lot of conversation recently about absenteeism.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, the bugaboo that we really can't do much about, which is before long weekends and vacations, but if we collectively come to some way to lessen that a bit, we may want some latitude there, so.
We probably also should check that school committee policy, because I think the language is pretty direct in that policy. So I look at.
So we may want to change.
I would look at that and maybe change that, and then that can influence the handbook, but I wouldn't want to change the handbook that said something different than what the policy says. Because I think the policy is pretty straight about not expecting teachers to produce assignments for kids who are taking vacation time on non-vacation. I think there was some, a lot of thought about that for this staff.
Yeah, and that's, we don't want people to have to do things.
Yeah.
Prior to when they're ready to do them for the rest of the class.
But doesn't, you know, I, it seems to me that, I guess Drew, this is directed to you, because you're sort of on the onsite administrator, it seems to me that if, if the teachers you use in Google Classroom and Google Calendar, it's a non-issue.
Yeah.
It's a non-issue, you're, you know, unless you're in some faraway country that doesn't have internet access, you know, you, you gotta have access.
I, I think you're absolutely right, I think this is like old language, because I think in today's world, they all have Google Calendar, Google assignments, they can look it up, and but I think Wally's making the point of, yeah, is encouraging kids to take the initiative to do it, I think that's your point.
Yeah, do it.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Do, do.
Take responsibility for not being there.
Yeah, let the teachers know you're not going to be there, and that you're going to use the Google Calendar to get the assignments in, but I think your point is really well made.
And I think, Wally, that, that piece can be solved with an easy famous last word, an easy discussion among the faculty.
Glad it's easy.
An easy discussion among the faculty. Just about, in your class expectations, make sure there's an item about, make sure you touch base with me if you're le, you know, if you're absent. Just leave it at that, about homework. I mean, it seems to me that it's, it's, a combination of items can make that a whole issue, just not, a non-issue.
Like that, I think the piece that, that people look for in addition, you know, additional readings or what else that you might not, you know, it's always.
What you're doing during the class.
Replace, replace the academic time, help us replace the academic time that we're going to otherwise miss, and you can't really do that. Even if it's like, go to all those different places or sites or stuff that they do a lot online, it's like, I can't really replicate that.
That's right, and you're not going to replicate it, going to see your teacher before vacation, after, that's a class discussion, you can't replicate it. The piece where it can become a problem is, let's say, in the language arts class, a new book is handed out the Thursday before a vacation, just, let's just say, and the student isn't there to get it, I mean, that's where I can see it's, you know, potentially an issue, and that's where it helps for the students to know the expectations, check with me, let me know so that I can provide you.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
On page fourteen, this is the piece that's moved from page sixteen to page thirty-one.
Yes.
In order for the child to return, and this may be state language, I don't know, in order for the child to return to school, a medical health professional or medical doctor must provide a written recommendation stating that it is appropriate for the child to re-enter. Are doctors willing to do that?
Oh, yeah.
Because immediately I sort of had this, now they're a lot if something happens.
No, I, no, that's not our experience.
Okay.
Yeah, no, they work really closely with staff, and essentially, it's a safety assessment, and that's what we're trying to ascertain, is whether or not the student will be safe for himself and for others to be in a school setting. So our clinical team, you know, it's our psychologists, our mental health professionals, the administration, special ed director, they're all working with the psychiatrists and psychologists and the doctors to, for that information. So it's worked pretty well for us. Basically, we want to alert, and really what this is, is no surprises, we want parents to understand that this is the process, so they're not surprised by it and feel like, well, I'm being penalized because, you know, my child needs help and you're saying they can't come to school. We, we want everyone to recognize that there's a process that we work through when we have challenges, you know, when students have challenging behaviors.
Understood, yeah, and that makes perfect sense. It just sort of struck me as I was reading it. The, you mentioned this, the new edition on page fifteen. Record pickup.
Ah, that would be, that's sixteen, the new edition, right, integrated student records.
Yeah. I read this and I, and I thought, well, aren't most people going to opt to have these sent to them after the school year ends, rather than get out, you know, come to school, get out of the car, go to the office?
So lots of.
So now we've got, you know, postage for, postage and mailing for all these kids that, to.
Most of them are onsite, because of our cer, our most, our kind of ceremony, end of year ceremony, that they're onsite, so we asked them to sign, take the records right there.
Right there.
Also there. But what we, what we wanted to do was not get into the place going, oh, we'll just hand the student, here are your records, take them home to mom. To me, to us, I'm like, that sounds a little bit square.
And then they're calling you.
Good thinking.
Looking for their records.
Yeah, so we.
All along, horn actors, exactly.
All those children didn't have school.
Yeah, well, the rail rail will be there, be easier to get them.
Well, we wanted there, just to make sure people signed for them, so they, they got in their hands. There was a question about maybe we could just, if kids' parents weren't there, can we just give them that, and I'm like, that's better.
Right.
So that's just, then we'll mail them home. I think, I'm trying to think back, last year, probably eighty percent, we had taken that, that, you know, there would be some parents who forget from the moment, and then we end up now, and for the most part, we get them to them.
Good, okay, great, nice job.
Great.
Thanks, Drew.
Actually, I have a question. The general music goes from three times a cycle to two.
Yes.
Is that an actual reduction, or could you give me some context?
We kind of changed how we do it over the past couple of years, so we, we use, the music used to be three times for sixth graders, three times for seventh graders, and then eighth graders could choose just the performing arts, or they're done. What we ended up doing was now you, now we provided more choice for kids, so they can choose the performing arts, they can be in a band, and that counts as their music class, or chorus, that counts as their music class, or if they're not in a music class, if they're not in a performing arts class, they take general music, and so general music would be two times in the sixth grade, two times in the seventh grade, and then two times in the eighth grade.
So it's, in a sense, it's not.
Essentially, we're leveling the playing field and just, we, we just did, we restructured how that music plays out.
So it's not necessarily a reduction, an actual reduction, but it's just a different way to.
So students who take general music, instead of getting, you know, three and three, and essentially zero, it would be two, two and two.
Yeah, okay, and the other question I had is, I didn't see any mention of hate speech in the book, or is there? The word hate speech, in other words, as opposed to, you know, everything else is covered, bullying and all the rest of it, but I didn't see that, and should that be in there and be defined and whatever?
So obviously, this is really your bag, and I defer to Diana more than me, but I think hate speech is largely covered underneath the school committees right now, all pieces about bullying and harassment. If you read those, reading the harassment language that the school committee has already adopted, it's pretty clear about hate speech and offensive language, and bullying is right in there about sort of stuff against gender, race. It's pretty clear, I, I, you know, what you all do as far as the overall policies is fine, but this stuff is in there, and I know admin across all of Concord CPS and CCHS has a policy for how we respond to hate speech, which we're going, which we will be following.
And the last question I have is, what's your process now in terms of getting to the final handbook and the timeline of, of that? How many weeks does it take from here, and, and what other steps of approval are there, or revisions, or whatever?
Right, so this, this is the first draft.
Yeah.
And you respond to it, and if there's anything else, you know, between now and June thirteenth, we will vote on it, you will vote on it in June thirteenth, you'll prove it. And then it will be ready for the incoming sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. It'll be online, posted as soon as you vote. So the vote will be June thirteenth.
And the, the person who's in overall charge of the two handbooks, is that Kristen Herbert or you?
No, no, the person who's in charge is, Drew's in charge of the, of the, each principal's in charge of making sure that the handbook is followed. And I, one question too, did you have a question? Others? Actually, I had several, but you've covered most of them and for other people. Only one less, which is, since we've talked about advisory, has there been thought given to putting something about advisory in the handbook, just to explain what it is, since it'll be new to everyone next year?
That's a good question. We, we haven't necessarily thought about adding it. What I did do, I had a draft of what the schedule would look like with advisory. We haven't, um.
Even, you know, a description of it.
Not a bad idea, we can definitely add that, I can definitely add that.
Yeah, that'd be great. I think that'd be terrific, just because a lot, for middle school students and, and parents, families in particular, who haven't been through the high school or heard about advisory. I think it's not going to mean much to them.
And it'll be important to indicate that it's replaced homework, because there won't be homework.
Right.
So someone might be like, well, you had homework this year, you're not having it next year.
So to just explain that, I think so.
The explanation would be good.
Yeah.
Yep.
And my only other comment was similar to what Wally said, but wow, you really went through this with a fine tooth comb, and thank you, that's very comprehensive.
I thought the revisions drew a responsive to, to some things that perhaps, you know, feedback we were getting, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, you did a really good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Nice job, Drew.
I just want to thank you for your professionalism through all of the process this spring with Principal Search, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, John's up next with a budget update.
So.
Good news?
Speaking to the.
You like that?
Can I know that looks like this?
Snowproof.
Okay, so the first thing you'll see is on the right-hand column, that YTD balance is really the year-end projection. So at this point in time, we're projecting that we'll lend the regular instruction portion of the budget with money of eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. That's necessary, and that's partially, it's created by the freeze that we, or near freeze that we put in place when all of those budgetary pressures that we talked about in discussions about supplemental appropriation took place. Those are reductions in expenditures that took place. In special education, you're seeing a projected deficit of five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Roughly four hundred and eight thousand of that is associated with the integrated preschool, which we talked about. In operations, there's a projection for a two hundred and twenty-six, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar overage. That's driven by the fifty thousand dollars in tornado damage. And we've also returned to full staffing in IT, and we did some, we added in the digital literacy position as well. And that's part of full staffing, because what we really did was we deleted an assistant director position that was in there, and also brought a data manager position that had been vacant for three, three years, we filled that back in. In administration, the deficit is projected at a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, and that's mainly driven by the principal absence that we talked about. We had to pay the principal for her time out while she recovered. She had accrued enough days to cover that, and we also had to pay for the replacement. And in fixed costs, we, we see a slight underrun of thirteen thousand projected, and all of that brings us within a couple of thousand dollars of our total appropriation. So it was, it was a challenging year, it did end up cooperating, and even, even as recently as the past couple of weeks, we had another shot to our littleness take place. So we needed to remain vigilant throughout the year, and we're still, we're still tight, we're still watching what we're doing as the year goes on, but this is our projection at this point in time.
John, this is great news, both to Diana and John, thank you for that vigilance, because a few months ago, it didn't look like this was going to be eighteen hundred dollars in the black suit, thank you so much.
If we had gotten the kind of snows.
Yeah, the weather corona.
FY15, you know, with those, those snow removal costs, it would have been not this much, which was great.
And I should also say flexibility on behalf of teachers and staff, who I'm sure many of whom are going without things that they wanted to request, so our thanks to all of those out there who have been flexible also to help us with this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on, the finance committee is thanking you also.
Appreciate that.
John, I have just a question on the special ed piece and the additional money we put into the budget for recognizing what we're experiencing here at the integrated preschool. Do you think we're.
For FY18?
For FY18, you think we're going to be okay there?
We're going to be a lot closer. We also built up the IT budgets, and we're, we're not closing the gap entirely, because it's, it's, it's always moving, but we're, we're certainly making substantial strides in, in getting the numbers to where they need to be. There's a constant alignment process going on with these things.
And has anything changed in our expectations for next year since?
For FY18? Not at this, not at this point. Not at this point.
Good, thank you. Nice job.
Thank you.
All right, John, good job, John. Anything else, any other questions? All right, then, on to votes. We have links from the agenda, one faculty child enrollment, and there's one other also that's been handed out, everybody's seen it.
So I'll move that the Concord School Committee vote to approve Ms. Pimentel's request to enroll her daughter in Concord Public Schools, and the tuition should be waived.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Any discussion on this?
I can't believe she's already had her kindergarten.
I know.
I know when she's born.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any abstained? That carries. We also have another request, I would take a motion.
I would move that the Concord School Committee vote to approve Ms. Cahill's request to enroll her son in the Concord Public School, schools and the tuition.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? And that carries. Okay, I know we've had a patient observer here. I'm assuming that's you. We have another one, a request that's a different request. We've all seen this, let me just go through the high level of it here. Lisa Batchley is the parent of a seventh grade student, is asking the school committee to approve an exemption to the attendance policy in order for her daughter to stay at the Concord Middle School next year in eighth grade. The family's been living in a rental in town for the past fourteen years, but was given short notice that the house would be sold. They tried unsuccessfully to stay in Concord, but were not able, and she's asking that her daughter could stay at Concord Middle School for the year until she would then return to CCHS as a Carlisle resident.
Yes, I just want to add, it's really two policies, so I, forgive me for not adding, it's JC.
It's JC, school attendance areas, as well as JHD, the exemptions and exclusions from school attendance. So that was linked today for you.
Yes. Okay.
I don't have the second one.
You don't have the second one?
I don't have JHD. I don't know why it's not that I do. Thank you.
It was linked.
So I, I think everybody's, actually, I know that Lisa, you wanted to, I'm assuming you're Lisa.
Yeah.
Because you're sitting here.
Hi.
I know. You wanted to make a comment. Do you want to come up?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I didn't, I mean, I kind of just wanted to be here in the event that anybody had any kind of specific question for me, or if I could kind of add to anything in any way, but I don't...
Can you first, or do you mind just stating your name and address?
Oh, yes, Lisa Badgley, sixty-one West Street, Concord, Mass.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. So I don't know, I mean, I've kind of talked to everybody, given you the background. And, you know, I know this is a kind of a large request and something that you guys don't do often, but it's really just, you know, the main idea here is just to keep Josie kind of in a good space, keep her on track at the, you know, at the middle school, just get through that. And then again, like we said, just get her to the high school. So that's our request.
Okay. So...
Do I have one question?
And I can answer anything too.
Uh, I'm happy to talk further, but this one, this, this has come as a vote, but we are voting on something that we normally would discuss one meeting and vote at the next.
So I was going to bring that up. It's, it's on the meeting as a vote, but we have the option to decide if, if people are not comfortable voting on it tonight, we can discuss it, give it some thought, and decide to wait until the next...
Table until the next...
It can wait until the next meeting.
And you're not under any time constraints?
No, absolutely not.
Two weeks?
Nope, I have it all.
Yeah, so I wanted to lay, I was going to mention that, thank you. So that is an option. We don't have to vote on it tonight. I think, I, I can give a little more background, I think, just from my discussion with Diana so far and my understanding. Certainly, the goal of it would be to create consistency and continuity for your daughter. In terms of reference points and history here, from what Diana has said, she gets requests like this every year, and there have not been any others that have been granted. Obviously, the biggest concern is precedent setting.
Yeah.
And so I'm sure you understand that.
I do, I do.
We all here are looking for the best interests of the children and students. At the same time, we also have to kind of defend what we do. Another point that I have to bring up, just for everybody's notice, is that I'm expecting a lot of scrutiny on the budget next year. And so, not that this changes our budget, but when people are digging into our budget and looking at close to seventeen thousand dollars per student, we could conceivably be targeted on something like this if we are granting those school privileges to someone, to a family who's not paying into the tax system, so to speak. So that's something just to be aware of. It's not to say that we should or shouldn't do it. Those are kind of the, the background data points that I have. I would welcome comments, discussion, questions.
I just want to make the point that next regional committee, you will be voting on that we are not a school choice district in either CPS or CCRSD.
Oh, that's interesting. Happy to take this vote.
We are not school choice.
Right.
Well, currently not, and without...
And we are not going to be school choice.
And we are likely to vote not to be that.
This is, this is a concern, because it, it, you're going to have to exempt again, not only for the attendance policies, but then from the choo, school choice vote.
School choice vote.
Because you're not school choice, and you can't take an action that acts like school choice when you said you're not school choice.
So how, logistically, how do we do that? We would vote to make it...
Well, we're going to vote that we're not school choice.
Vote that we're not school choice, and then vote to make an exemption to that vote.
Right, which is, that is going to be questionable.
Oh, that's at a state level?
Yes. So it's very complicated at this point, when you're not in the same district.
Right.
And...
Same town.
The vote on, on choice, you're saying it's, it's a done deal, or...
Yes, we are not school choice.
Because, I mean, what, I don't know what...
We don't have space.
Okay, so that's the...
We've never been, we've always voted not to.
We simply don't have space.
Okay.
We, we, we barely have enough space for our own faculty children, and then we don't have space.
And then you don't know how many people would come in if you voted yes.
Well, I can take a guess.
Would you like to take a guess?
Yeah, I love guesses.
We're guessing that we would be importing more students than exporting.
Just asking.
So that's the challenge.
Right, yeah, okay.
And to your knowledge, there's never been an exemption granted for someone from another district?
I mean, I, let me, let me, let me be clear. I have never, I have never brought one to the school committee, because I've always said, I've always said no. And then we've never had a family bring it to the school committee. But in talking with Lisa, she has a compelling case and a hardship case. So I let her know that this would be the process. You know, there, you appeal my decision to the school committee. And so that's why you're here.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I had a kind of an idea that I sort of wanted to put out there, and like I was thinking of something that would make this more unique, because I understand, as I spoke to a few of you beforehand about the whole precedent thing, I get that. And I think if you, you know, do it for us, then it's like another family's going to come along. We know a lot of people in Concord, and it's like, you know, you don't want to turn this into something that snowballs and makes everybody uncomfortable. And I didn't know, like, I'm a licensed addiction counselor and mental health specialist, you know, I don't know if there's something I could do to bring to the high school or to bring to the middle school awareness. I mean, I have, I certainly have the background. I have the, I have the license, and maybe that could be something that would make this more unique, or something if I were to be a part-time, I don't know, counselor or something at the school. I'm just, I'm trying to brainstorm. Something that would make...
Gift some type of service.
Yeah, I mean, something that would make this a little bit more to add to this, because I understand the difficulty of this. So I was just thinking about that, or something that maybe I could bring to the school. So I don't know if that's something more important.
No, I love the idea of thinking just along different lines. I'd look to Diana again for kind of advice and references. Is that something that we, is that a type of gift of service that we could even take as a district?
Not, not, not connected to the decision.
Certainly not.
We certainly appreciate the offer, and, but, but it has to be totally separate from this decision. This decision is clearly about what our policies are. And so we're, we're not school choice. We have two attendance policies, and we have a request to exempt from all of that for a particular situation.
Okay.
So, and, and...
So, and if we don't grant the request, she would go to the Carlisle school?
We would probably maybe try to see if we could get an apartment in Concord or something. I mean, we really have tried. I don't know if anybody's tried renting a property in Concord lately. It's, it's pretty impossible for us. So we, we really went down that avenue. This came to us out of nowhere. We've been here for fourteen years, really with the idea that we were going to be there till at least 2019. And, you know, we're at the mercy of the owner. You know, he came and said financially they wanted to get rid of the house and left us kind of scrambling. We did go to a couple of places in Concord that fit our family. We have a family of five, starting in May, I have three college kids who come home from the Saturday through September first. So we have a full house. And, you know, financially, we just did the thing that worked out the best. And a lot of friends of mine that are in real estate had said, you know, something comes along that suits your needs, you guys should jump on it, because they're few and far between. I was telling Diana, there was a house on Conant that would have been perfect for us. Kept my daughter in West Concord, which is where we've been, where she loves, enjoys, the whole thing. It was listed at like eight o'clock on a Saturday night. I got it from a friend that I should go look at it. By the next day, there were already twelve applicants. And we did a family bio, we did all kinds of stuff. We gave a picture, which I don't even think is legal, but whatever, and we didn't get it. So I mean, we have tried. You know, I mean, the idea was never to go to Carlisle. But then there was the idea of the financial piece for us, which makes sense and which we have, we kind of looked at from every angle. So, you know, I was actually thinking, not in terms of a volunteer situation, but if there was a need for an actual employee at the high school that would, you know, somebody who actually does those services. I mean, obviously, the opioid crisis is out, out of control. And I think a lot of people here, and I think a lot of people in the teaching profession are really not equipped to deal with that, because it's really, it's, I see it every day. So, you know, that was more what I was thinking, was not kind of like a barter, like I'll give you a couple hours a week so she can go to school, but actually, you know, doing something, you know. And I'd be more than happy to do it, because I think as a total side note, there is a huge need for that. This is a crisis that is going to really affect somebody you know, if it hasn't already. So, you know, it's just, it, for her, she's thirteen, it seems devastating. And I use that word to, with Diana, and I stand by that word. I mean, to be with all of her friends at Peabody, she's on all the teams. It's, doesn't bode well for her to think she has to go to Carlisle. For her, that seems like she's going to, you know, Mars, you know. So it's really, and she's a straight A student, she's really active in school, she's done really well. I don't want to do anything to like derail that at thirteen. I just, you know, I want to keep it consistent. And I know I'm asking for a very big, favor is not really the right, appropriate word, but, you know, something for you better to consider. But I would be very willing to, you know, apply for some sort of a job that would maybe be beneficial to everybody and maybe make the decision a little bit easier, because I'm a part of the school. I don't know. It's just something I've been thinking about.
I love the idea in theory. You'd have to talk to Diana about whether there's something out there. I know we can't add a position to the budget right now, because we just passed the budget for next year. So I don't know if there's anything out there that would be relevant. That's certainly something that you could, you know, look into aside from this meeting.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
Just along the lines of your, sorry, the, the line of hardship. I mean, I, I think the only potential way for us to, to say, oh, we, you know, we want to make this happen, and it's not a precedent because, would be to say it's extreme hardship, the fact that you can't find a place. I have to say, though, I called the Muse to check out apartments there, and they have plenty. So is, is that something that can't work for some reason?
And I'll answer to that. We looked into getting like their town home or whatever. They didn't have any of those available, but they did have at the time, and they still do, they do have apartments. But they're two-bedroom, the square footage, and for us, again, it comes down to finances. We have a house full of things. So it's like spending thousands of dollars on a storage unit or a pod. Then having my college kids have to come home with all of their stuff, where do we put that? Where do they live for the summer? Do they go to South Boston and spend three thousand dollars a month in an apartment? I mean, so it's really a financial constraint. I mean, even though it sounds like a year, for us, it's, you know, it's expensive to move. And, yeah, I mean, we looked at it from every angle. And the homes that did make sense for us, again, as I said, had twelve applications, you know, eight hours in. So I mean, we have looked at, and we will if we have to.
Right.
You know, we will find an apartment in Concord, and my daughter and I will stay there Monday. I mean, that's how important this is to her.
Yeah.
And we're willing to do that. But we really weren't willing to spend thousands and thousands of dollars to have college kids live here, furniture here. It just didn't make sense for us. We don't have the means to do that.
When I called back, they had three bedrooms. So maybe there's, maybe there's more available now than when you spoke to them.
Well, yeah, but the other, yeah, the other thing is, we couldn't wait to the last second to get something. I mean, you have to plan ahead for everybody else, and, you know. And for my husband and I, I work in Belmont, living at Carlisle will make my commute that much. I mean, there's no real upside for us, you know. But we did, we looked into everything. I have a lot of paperwork that I could also, you know, share with anybody. I didn't bring it tonight, just not knowing if it was relevant.
Not when it's five years old yet.
But you could see all the applications that we signed, the properties that we tried for. I have that, you know, documented, and I could certainly show it to anybody if that was, because we really have done our due diligence that way.
But that's very good to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I think, uh...
One, one question, and it's really more, just for the record. And, you know, we know each other.
Yeah.
From the neighborhood. But you have two kids in college, both went completely through Concord schools. And your daughter is in seventh grade, and she's been in Concord schools her entire school life.
Yeah. And I guess being a hardship is kind of like, it's not, it wasn't a choice to move. I know I have said that quite a bit, but that kind of is sort of the sticking point for me, is that we didn't just up and say, oh, we have our dream home in Carlisle, we're buying it, and my daughter would like to spend her last year. I mean, this was kind of like, no, you guys have to, you know, be out by June thirtieth. And so, you know, this is a hardship in that regard, was that we just were told, you know, that we had to kind of move, which was never something we had anticipated happening at this point.
Right.
If it happened this time next year, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. But unfortunately, it didn't. So it's presenting us with a problem that we didn't really know was going to be as great as it is.
Yeah.
Quite honestly.
If, Heather, if we were to table this until the next meeting, the next opportunity we would have to vote on is May thirty-first?
Yes, May thirty-first is the next.
Well, I was, I was considering just June thirteenth, CPS meeting. You could vote on, you could do, we could do a CPS if you wanted to on May thirty-first. But I was, I was planning for June thirteenth.
I'm just thinking about...
There's a lot on the agenda, the thirty-first.
Yeah, the thirty-first is filled with...
Yeah.
Yeah. So I was going to suggest that it stay a CPS item only.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'm just thinking about, I, I would like to table it and delay the vote. And I, I don't want to make Lisa wait a month either. And give her some sense of where she stands and some kind of certainty before, you know, mid-June.
Right.
So you, you're interested in having it May thirty-first?
Are you saying...
I am.
You don't want to vote tonight, yeah?
What's that?
Or are you saying vote tonight?
No, I, I, I don't want to vote tonight personally. I want to look at this more. But I, I wouldn't want to wait till mid-June, just to be fair and give Lisa some certainty.
Well, if this is something that we, and I, I want to see what other people's thoughts on it are tonight as well, if, if you have thoughts on. If we have what discussion we can tonight, and each do research and plan to take a vote on the thirty-first. But I think at that point, it would, it would be somewhat of a, you know, we'd come in having done research, and each person probably knowing where they stand, and it wouldn't necessarily be a long discussion. But we could probably adjourn the region, and the vote would end up late at night probably, if we just do CPS on the, on the thirty-first. So that's realistic. Mm-hmm.
I would just say, I, I feel fairly well informed, and if we, I, I would vote yes if we were going to. I would vote to vote tonight.
Okay.
Not saying all my voters, I would vote to vote tonight.
Okay.
But I'm not rabid about it. But I do, I don't feel like I have to do more research.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd, I'd feel comfortable voting on the thirty-first on this.
On the thirty-first, okay.
I just had one question, sort of a hypothetical question. And it's directed towards Diana, primarily because you're the expert, obviously, in the field. Is there any way that we could approve this without setting any kind of precedent? And, you know, I don't need to necessarily have an answer right now, but just, just to explore.
No, I've been thinking about it.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I will say this, you will be challenged.
Yeah.
You can say it is without precedent. But I, I will tell you, as I said, every year, I have requests. They come to me first, and I deny them when they're, when I, it's very clear. As a matter of fact, five years ago, the school committee spent considerable time denying a family whose house was in Acton in Concord, but the child slept in Acton.
There you go.
In the house.
In the house.
The bedroom.
And that, and that child was denied attendance in Concord.
That's tough.
I remember that.
Wow.
That's tough.
So we've had experience with this.
Did they pay taxes in both towns?
Yes, they did. And their argument was that they paid both taxes in town, but they paid more taxes in Acton. But there's an old law on, in Massachusetts. And the reason why I know is because my dad slept in a house that was in the Concord and Sudbury line. My dad went to Concord Elementary Schools, and my, his, my uncles went to Sudbury. Because in those days, people didn't argue. They just liked, well, that's what the school district says, that's where you go.
Wow.
So I remember that. So I researched it, you know, for that discussion five years ago and five or six years ago.
Wow.
And the family ended up moving totally to Concord in the new house.
Oh, and they moved the house over a bit?
Well, they, they first tried, they, actually, actually, they, that's what they wanted to do.
She just switched bedrooms with another?
Yeah, it was not that, yeah, it was not that.
Two bedroomed apartment.
Yeah.
Sweeped in the garage for a year.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Just one more, and Diana, you've seen two or three of these every year or on average?
Yeah.
It's not just like one every three years or something?
No, 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 every year there's at least one and sometimes I have to-
Can, can I, can I, and I, I think I'm splitting hairs here, but when we say, you know, we've, we've seen these before, have we seen an instance in which we had a renter who was notified, you need to be out, and it was an inability to find a rental, um, that fit the needs of the family in Concord?
I would say hardship cases were pretty similar. The specifics are not exactly the same, but each one had a reasonable hardship case. You know, each family would, so it wasn't simply, we're moving to Acton because we have our dream house and by the way, we want them to finish at Throw.
Mm-hmm.
No, they, they, they were all similar, and typically it was renters that were in those positions.
Mm-hmm.
I have a question to that too, would, is there a difference in that scenario because basically that child would end up being in the Acton high school? Like in this ser-, you know, kind of if you use the term of like, you know, bridging it from, I mean, she's gonna be at Concord Carlisle High School, you know, a year from now, it's not like we moved to Lexington to Acton, is that, does that account for anything?
That has no, yeah, has no, no bearing, yeah.
'Cause at Concord Carlisle, you know, merges, some thinking maybe that way.
Well, but it's Carlisle, you could argue she's going to Carlisle and it merges.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not like she's, I'm not, not arguing either way, I get, but like what you're arguing is, but she's going to Concord Carlisle, but she would be in Carlisle and go to Concord Carlisle or Concord, go to, I mean-
No, I was just saying, I was just using the discrepancy between somebody who moved to Acton and who wants to go to finish up in Concord. That, there's no correlation between going to Acton, whereas if you moved to Carlisle in your eighth grade year, ninth grade, you're back in Carlisle, the Concord Carlisle High School, that was the, that was just-
Yeah, no, it's really all about residence, it's about where you sleep, you know, but that's what the law is and that's actually what the, it's where you're sleeping.
And the other thing, I mean, again, I would prefer to hold off voting, 'cause it's a first, I've contemplated this in depth, 'cause I am concerned about the school choice aspect of it too. Um, it seems complicated and I'd be concerned also about, um, i- if someone comes and says, well, you've granted this before and we don't grant it, is there some sort of legal path they can take and then we're, you know? So again, just, again, if I had my, if there's nothing at stake and what, what do I wanna do? I wanna accommodate you and your daughter, absolutely, but I'm just trying to think through some of the non-personal, if you aren't sitting here. You know, really being clear, you know, about like sort of what does this open us up to and, and be sure?
It's the risk of discrimination from our perspective.
So, that, yeah, that's what I was just gonna add to what Joanna said, does it open us to a risk of a discrimination lawsuit?
Well, I, I don't wanna say that, but I mean, yes.
Can we run this by council?
I've not, not yet.
I think we should do that.
Yeah, we probably should.
Well, so we, yeah, that's what I think we need a little time to, to really understand. You know what it is?
Yeah, I think that's a good recommendation.
Others, thoughts to share before we wrap up the discussion at least then? Then-
I make a motion to table this, uh, vote to either the thirty-first or the-
Thirteen.
Or the third, June thirteenth.
Or June thirteenth, to be determined in the adjournment.
Second motion.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Or abstain? All right, sorry, we don't have an answer for you.
No, I, I expect that you would, um, and if anybody has any ideas, I might pursue, um, going to the high school. I'm just seeing about what I had mentioned and see maybe that could be helpful.
Yeah.
Um, and we'll certainly do homework on our end to see what we can do to help. I appreciate it, and I realize it's a, it's a request that you don't get, well, you do get it often.
Well, no, not often.
Don't get it from the chair often.
Thank you very, very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming to help.
Oh, absolutely, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, um, then we've done our votes, um, olden CMS facility study, that's me. Um, the quick update, I know, surprise, surprise, something else I need to talk about. Um, the facility study is going along really well. Uh, in our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, our architect Feingold Alexander presented to us the first draft of their final report to us. Um, it included cost estimates for kind of renovating the buildings as is, doing substantial renovation additions and building a new building. Um, the costs for all of those are, are not necessarily significantly different, which is interesting, there's some slight variations. Um, we're working with them to kind of revise, um, some of what they put into it, some of the presentation and everything. Um, we'll be meeting with them again next week and the committee's getting ready to come here and will present to all of us on June thirteenth. So we will hear the, the kind of wrap-up report from the facilities committee here on June thirteenth and should be an interesting discussion, it's going along very well.
Awesome, thank you.
Any questions or feedback you've heard from the field on this one?
Exciting.
All right, exciting, yeah.
Middle school teachers are anxious to be in one building.
Other than when can we have a new building?
They remind me every time we go.
Yes, absolutely, then, that's it for me, I'm good, oh.
I will say that, you know, through four nights' town meeting, um, you know, the, very little came up around the prospect of a middle school building project, which I think is good.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it's, it's a known quantity, it's been in paper. Um, you know, there's plenty of discussion about how much money we're spending as a community and, you know, it's easy and, and also the schools, but it's, uh, there was not a, it wasn't like CMS building project was walking around with a target of its back, which I think is, is a good thing. And I think, uh, bodes well for transparency to date and the more transparent we can be going forward about the process and the more inclusive and, you know, the better it will go as we go forward.
Absolutely, that's our goal. And I will hand it over to Diana.
Great, so, um, I have some great information about the middle school. So this past weekend, our, um, middle school Boston students represented the middle school in their first annual tenacity team challenge, it was held in Bedford. And they won first place for their leadership challenge project, addressing discrimination at the middle school.
Oh.
And they did a literary analysis and creative responses to A Long Walk to Water, remember the Sudan Water Project?
Yeah.
And that included their response included an original song that they wrote, score, violin music, lyrics and performance. And they tied, uh, for second place in the math quiz bowl, so overall, they came in first place.
Wow, that's amazing.
So that's very exciting, we're very proud.
That's awesome.
It was their first representation and they did very well.
That's great.
So, um, another exciting opportunity for our middle school students that we're really proud about, and you've heard about this before, the spider team. We have ten members of CMS students, of the spider team, that collaborate with the MIT research team, graduate students, doing, they've done an eight-month research project in the laboratory for, um, atomistic, atomistic and molecular mechanics, atomistics.
These are huge.
Part of the Department of Civil and Environmental Engineering. And, um, that's with, uh, uh, applied technology teacher Doug Shattuck, they've been working after school. And again, as you recall, they're investigating the mechanical properties of a spider web and the tensile strength.
Yeah.
But what's so cool is that they work with MIT graduate students every, every once a week. And not only that, they, they've been invited to present a paper in the summer in the Midwest because of their work, and they're twelve and thirteen years old.
Wow.
I mean, that, that is really cool.
That's really impressive.
And so thanks to Doug, you know, for providing this opportunity for our students, do, do you see the wide range of opportunities? We have girls who are coding, we have students that are going to tenacity challenges, all those skills that they're learning to collaborate and develop projects and present and persuade and create. I mean, knock your socks off.
That's terrific.
I mean, who does that? Concord middle school students do.
That's right.
Ask who does it, so we're really proud, that's really exciting. And then you, yes, and then you heard a little bit about the advisory program.
Yes.
So, um, I did wanna say that, um, the information is that we'll replace homeroom, CMS dance together and house huddles, but it will include the CMS dance together content and activities. It'll also provide academic and social support and then also some fun activities to build, you know, school community and a positive school culture. So we're very excited that it was a group of colleagues, faculty members, that researched different advisory programs in different middle schools and brought back the recommendations and then the faculty responded to it and most of them are willing to try it, so I think that's, you know, kudos to the team.
That's great.
That's really exciting.
And it feels like it's gonna be high quality, I mean, I've had kids, and I'm on my last one now, going through the middle school, but that, the, it feels like the quality of merging that and the way they've come with that just feels like, that, that, that's finally answering the, the call of sort of how to capture that advising and community feel within, you know, a smaller group and then, it just seems great.
I'm expecting to be very successful.
That's terrific.
And then our grade five arts nights, they are fabulous, so I highly recommend them. So it's art reflection and what I love is the fifth grade students, they actually write their written reflection of their growth as artists. Now, who does that? I mean, it's just, it's just remarkable and it's very exciting and then they do their performance, their musical performances. The fifth graders are very excited about this, the parents are excited and it's really a great opportunity to see cumulatively how our students have achieved, so those are great nights, there's three of them.
How many are those?
May thirty-first, June fifth and, um, Ju-, May twenty-fourth, and the June fifth one is after my party. So you come to my party and then go to the, right, the Throw Night.
Good.
Yeah, and then I just wanted to reinforce the drinking water assessment. You know, it's been in the media about, um, water fountains in schools and, um, the State Department had their own water assessment, but we hired a private firm, Occupational Health and Safety, and they've conducted the water assessments all this school year for CCHS as well as CPS. And I'm, um, proud to report that more than twenty water samples were collected for copper and lead analysis and they're all within the EPA and the lead and copper rule, so, all within the standards, so.
That's great.
Um, our drinking fountains can be used. And according to what the fifth grade students reported, you're better off drinking from a water fountain than you are using water in a water bottle.
Kiva, you don't have plastic.
Yeah, plastic water bottle.
In Concord, in Concord, not necessarily other places.
No, no, but it's water, our water fountains in school, so. You learn something from a ten-year-old, really good kids. Very good, yeah, so that's it.
Awesome, yes, that is, is there anything else that anyone wanted to mention for the evening?
I think we mentioned this the, uh, the last meeting, but, uh, I wanna say specifically CPS. I was very pleased the way, uh, town meeting went, we did a great job, we covered, we did a nice job, Bob, nice job. Um, very nice job on the warrants that related to CPS.
Carlisle?
Yeah, yeah, and Carlisle went well, and, um, John, thank you, uh, for all of your, your work, uh, preparing us.
I was glad to see the lincoln, your question.
You know, and Joanna, you, you really, you, you, you had your own, on that lincoln question. I was passing by it, you know, I pass by it, feels like daily, driving the kids up and, you know, pointing out to them, you know? By the end of the summer, that's gonna be a nice, nicely piece of property, so.
Greenfield.
No, so good job, I thought it was nicely done.
It was, well.
I'm gonna test, test your man's knowledge, I felt a little like Kevin Costner in The Big Chill. Well, I felt it kinda gonna fall off. I did get to have a chat with him, to see.
Yes, thank you.
I thought you were gonna talk about Field of Dreams, if they build it, they will come.
Yeah.
The only time I saw him was laying on the patio.
That's right, that's right.
Um, the, uh, we're at the, Bob and I were at the select board meeting last night and Carmen came and did a, a debrief, uh, of town meeting and just, uh, uh, she, there was discussion there about, uh, the use of the auditorium versus, uh, the gymnasium versus auditorium and back and forth and, uh, she's got some pretty good feedbacks and so she did a survey, so it might be valuable for us to ask her to share that with us. Um, the, uh, but I think, uh, the general sense I got from the meeting, obviously that could change, was that they certainly would wanna try the gymnasium again next year. There was, uh, you know, an issue about, uh, how uncomfortable the bleachers were for that length of time. Um, and, uh, and, you know, I mean, if they wanted to pay to get beds, then they could probably do that. But the thing that I think we can do something about or we should be thinking about was, there was a lot of, there was, there were a lot of comments about how cold it was in the gym and my guess is it was cold outside, air exchange is happening and we probably aren't providing a lot of heat to that on, on a timed basis because nobody's there.
Right.
So we may need to, we will be asked to moderate that for the gymnasium, uh, next year.
Sure.
And, uh, but in general, uh, they were very happy with the staff and already built out, um, and very appreciative, so.
Great, well, I would echo Sam Alves Sam, I know we said it at the joint meeting, but I'm so excited about us having Spanish and Latin and thank you for all the support that you've given us to make that happen.
And we've hired fabulous teachers of Spanish, fabulous.
Can't wait.
Yeah, this is such an exciting time because we're hiring new faculty and I have to say, I am so impressed.
That's great.
So impressed, the, the quality of professionals that we are hiring is just incredible. And the responses, they are so excited, enthusiastic, you would think I'm handing them the Willy Wonka. I mean, that's how I feel.
That's great.
I mean, they are just so excited because they've already met our colleagues and they are so excited about working with their colleagues.
How could you not be inspired by the team of faculty that we have, that's great.
It's a great process and I'm so glad that that's the way we do it.
That's terrific.
And, um, and I just, it's been really inspiring, the new faculty are, it's very, very exciting.
It's great to have people who are coming in so excited to be a part of this, that's great.
Yes, and we already have our Latin teacher for the middle school.
Good.
So we're, we're just, it's, it's exciting. And remember, we have to have coding classes as the years go on, remember that.
Let's put that on the list for the next year.
The, the years of experience that these new teachers have, is there any kind of?
Yes, so it, it, there's a wide range.
It is a wide.
A wide range, typically, typically, we see about, um, that they've had about seven or eight years someplace else. But I would say there's a range, yeah, so fabulous, so thanks.
Great, I'll take a motion to adjourn if anyone wants to be done, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, have a good night, everyone.
Thanks.
Thank you, Heather.